Item is approval of minutes. At your office, you have the minutes, you also field them as well. They were motion to accept. A vote moved, is it seconded?
I'll second it.
Lori seconded. Any questions, concerns, additions, deletions, or omissions?
You're done?
Yes.
Yes. I don't think I was here last time.
You're not here?
No.
Okay.
It looked like you were.
I wasn't here.
Jess wasn't here.
And I wasn't here.
And...
And you're not listed.
You're not listed.
Wow.
Okay. Making that change. Anything else? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor?
My name's Belgrano.
Pose.
My first name this time, Josh.
I'm on the 92nd.
And abstentions with that correction. One, two, three. Thank you for that. Obviously, I know that Jess was unable to be here last one. We had an early meeting because of the budget presentation. And somebody stepped in, but we'll make sure we keep a better eye on the spelling of the things. Before we start to go into the administrative reports and go through the agenda, I'd like to introduce a new member to our committee. David Deschamps, a representative for Barry, was elected this week and was sworn in this week. So welcome, David, to our committee.
Thanks.
David, and we'll also have potentially another seat from coverage team next month, what they're doing there. We'll see more about that as through our change of the agreement, we have another seat that will be on in our committee.
I think the way I have this gets smugger.
Dave, we welcome you. Well, Jess will follow up on you. There'll be an opportunity for you to go through an orientation for school committee members to have a basic understanding of the fiscal, responsible, and all the pieces that we are charged with as on the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as a bona fide body.
And that is run by the Mass Association of School Committees, and they have like some workshops and stuff. So we'll keep you posted where they are and who you want to participate.
I was actually gonna try and figure out so that he can meet with Ada, Depp, and Dave all at the same time.
And our other question as well.
Anyone else can attend too, we've already talked.
Beautiful. It's an obligation for us as a community. Good. Thank you and welcome. What we're hard at doing here, we're sure we represent and do best to get in our community. Administrative reports, superintendent schools.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman, but I'm covered with your on in the agenda.
Okay. Assistant superintendent?
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Administrative, Director of Administrative Services?
Yes. Since our last meeting, warrants have been signed, payroll warrants 2021, and account payable warrants 20A, 21B, and 22A. In your packet, I believe, is a report for the frozen nutritional services department. There it is. I'll just run through it really quickly. On the first page is some data. Remember, we didn't have a report on February back in the March meeting because we only went to school 12 days. So what we do on this first page is compare February of 2014 to February of 2015, and I've highlighted two numbers for you. A year from last February, we served 976 meals a day. This past February, 1,031 a day. So an increase in participation from 41% to 45%. February has been, I didn't have a chance to go back to my January report, but Colin reminded me that February has been the highest participation so far this school year at 45%. Looking at March as compared to last year, we served 984 meals as compared to 1,035 this past month, and participation was at 44%. On the back, Mr. Borver provided us with a menu update. He and a colleague of another school district went to a school nutrition association conference that was held in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, where they were able to go to North Coast seafoods, and they were able to sample some fish that will be on our menu in May, I believe he says. There will be salmon, burgers, and crusted redfish on our menu in May. Also, if you remember back to the beginning of school, we were praying to have a frozen yogurt salad bar option, and unfortunately, we can't afford a new machine, so we purchased a used machine that had a slow, very slow freon leak that happened down just before the first lunch began. So Colin has worked very hard. He was not going to give up on this concept station and is working with a company called Island Oasis, who has now developed a fruit and vegetable smoothie that fits the regulations. So that will also be partnered up with our salad bar starting next month. At this point, there are different regulations for a snack size, so this will be a full 10-out size to go with a salad bar. And he's gonna do the nutritional analysis to meet the other guidelines for snacks to see whether or not it can be sold in a smaller size in the grab-and-go station. So he will know that before we send him the menu for April. In addition, I ran some reports tonight before the meeting. I'll start with the good news. We have 783 students that have prepaid accounts, which means they have money on their account for school lunch, totaling over $15,000. So that's the positive. We have 326 students, or basically half, I guess, for it, half, with negative balance that totaled only $2,800. Very happy with this report tonight. We have 47 students that are over the limit of $15, and seven of those that are currently in collections that total $700. So we were very happy to get a check today of over $350 from one family. That was very good, so that helped our bottom line here, but this is a very positive report than has been in the past couple of months, so we're happy with that.
Any questions, please? Any other?
I have, and then one more item.
Okay, go ahead.
I was hoping to present the budget subcommittees with a budget transfer request for this current fiscal year on Tuesday night when they met, to be actually to be taken at this meeting tonight. However, it's become more daunting than we thought. As you saw the other night, if you were here for budget, then we have several accounts that are in negative balances. Our oil, it was just a very hard January, February mark and now April on our oil, we expect to be about $68,000 in the red for oil. Our electric new bid came in in February, a 30% increase, as well as our net metering credit plan was supposed to come online in February, is now due to come online on May 15th. So we won't be seeing any of those net metering credits until our May, or bills that we get in June for the month of May. So we expect an overage there of $20,000. We have some overages in benefits, health insurance, and unemployment workers comp. So I met with different budget managers today. Claire and I went through every facility's account. We can even cover some things there, all within facilities. And we're looking at coming to you April 27th? April 27th with a recommendation to transfer and get all of our budget accounts into the positive. We decreased the budget yesterday. We have staff meeting and let everybody know that was there, that the budget has to be frozen in order for us to come out on top by the end of the year. That's all I have.
Any questions for... Just wanna follow up, Carol. Before you were talking about the handling of the accounts in our budget as we go forward, I just wanna make a comment on the status of food and nutritional services. Thank you for the report. Thank you for the update. We're keeping an eye on that because we did have a deficit account and potentially could be a deficit again. So hoping that we, changes and turns around, but if not, I think we need as a committee potentially to look at our policy.
Our charge policy.
Our charge policy and revisit and take a look at it if we need to. This is the second year of us looking and being updated on a monthly basis, and I appreciate that. And I just wanted to say to the committee, I think we'll keep keeping good eye, but also at the same time, we make sure we're responsible and our parents are responsible and helping to pay for their food for students as well. Good. And on the budget piece, we'll cover all the piece later.
Yes, we will.
I'll hear from Mr. Lewis. Great. What I'd like to do, if there's not going to be an objection from the committee, we'll do teacher advisory, the student advisory, and before we go into subcommittee reports, we'll take out of order the report, or the update of the trip to Italy. I think we gotta be appropriate to put right there with the student base as well. If no objection, good. Teacher advisory.
Yeah. Eighth graders and teachers at the middle school are extremely excited to be heading out to Washington DC on Monday. We're also excited about the temperature to get away from this winter at one end. It's looking pretty good. Lee and Dave are also joining us, which I think speaks volumes about the school committee. It's awesome that they're there to experience that. So kids are extremely excited. I'm sure Lee will have a good presentation when we get back. Hopefully, we'll have a great time and a safe trip, so we'll update you when we get back. That's all I have.
And Dave and maybe some others will eventually pick up chat rooms and join as well. Have a good trip. Okay. And student advisory.
Hello. I've been sitting for a couple of hours.
I know.
Something just happened to our schedule. I'd like to start by talking about the now very end of the winter athletics. We had our recent CU nights and other activities, and at these nights and other times, some athletes were recognized. For basketball, Jacob Lanther was recognized by the Massachusetts Basketball Coach Association as a Mass All Academic Team selection in basketball, and Colin Bennett was recognized for the Mass All Senior Boys Team selection in basketball. And they will be honored and recognized at a banquet at Holy Cross College in May. I was requested by my basketball coach to talk about that. For wrestling, at our banquet, two of our wrestlers were also recognized. Senior captain Brendan Roach and freshman Connor Thompson were recognized as the midwatch, for the midwatch All-Star team. And then the telegram is at Super Team, and there's articles about that as well, so that's pretty cool.
And it is?
I don't know about any other athletes, just because no one has talked to me about them. Yeah.
But the one, the winter, the winter sports.
Yeah, about the winters. Obviously, spring should start now.
Let's see.
Recently, the school, well, the senior class hosted Mr. Quabin, which is kind of like a beauty pageant for males, I suppose you could call it. We had a lot of nice talents and interview performances themed attire as well. It was a lot of fun. And our senior, or our Mr. Quabin for 2015 was Griffin Bennett.
Related to Colin?
Uh, somehow. We had seven entries. But it went very well. I think it was better than other years. We just had a good group of people in our class.
No bias there, though?
No.
And there were a number of teachers involved.
What do you mean?
Not the teachers, hell.
As judges, yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah. We had five teachers as judges. Mr. Lewis was our MC. He was an experienced teacher. Yeah, it went well. Last Tuesday, I think it was, was the Scholar Scholastic Awards for the second trimester, and it was extremely well-attended, I would say. So I just think it speaks a lot to Quabin as a school for all these people that are doing well in their classes, and I hope they will continue to do the same. We had a French, we hosted French students recently for the French exchange trip, and from what I hear, they enjoyed it a lot. There is a newspaper article, which I hope you read, because it's by Farad Aragut. And also upcoming next week, we are having students traveling to France and the Netherlands for some trips. So that's pretty cool. And also, on another more national scale, right this year, even today, we have two members from our robotics team over in Omaha for the Robotics National Competition. I have not heard about their progress today, but they have had a few errors, but they have been getting over them for some ways. So that's nice.
Fantastic. Thank you for the update.
That's pretty much it's going on. And Ms. Marshall, I would...
You wanted a snow day, I know.
I wanted to say that. We all thank you as a class, but I think the seniors can do without any more studies.
Okay.
And if I...
You're very welcome. Six free days for you.
And if I don't have any questions, I think that's pretty much all to say.
Any questions, you can, any minute.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to comment is, thank you for coming every month to explain, bring this up. I just have one comment just to ask. The trimester, trimester just ended, the awards were given. This is the second year that we instituted that type of scheduling, correct?
Yes.
Students are settling in, they like it, and the bumps and the rumps that we need to make adjustments with, you're working through the student council with the administration to make any changes. I just wanna make sure that that line of communication is open and clear.
I'd say it's going pretty well. I've heard a lot of opinions about the trimester. I still don't think everyone likes it, but I don't think that's possible. There are always, but people are definitely set in it. Either they like it or they don't.
Gotcha, okay.
That's one way to look at it. But I feel the majority of people do enjoy the trimester for various reasons.
Good. One of our reasons was to make sure we had more classes and opportunities to also offer our students, and that was one of our benefits and features of that. But we also need that input and the feedback from the students to know that it's working effectively.
And just one more thing I want to add. Some students were commenting on the scheduling this year a bit being a bit odd, such as we're not, in March, I don't think we had any as many late bus days. We just, and just, also, we did have a late bus day on the first week of the trimester, which doesn't make sense to a lot of us because there's no real reason to stay after those points for the majority of students.
So that's a, I think it was like council from work.
Snow days got in the way of the trimester starting when it was supposed to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so just a couple of odds schedule, or odd schedule things.
Thank you. All right.
Don't go away. I'm gonna be crucified now.
Oh, no.
In your opinion, we initiated the trimester. Your learning experiences, were they good, bad, or indifferent as compared to the previous scheduling?
I feel they did not start off great just because of the required adjustment to the new scheduling. However, I feel that things are still going well now, now that most teachers are adjusted to the shorter classes, they're able to talk about the information that they need to. I do feel it's a bit, still a bit odd having much, or later, or much shorter classes, and I don't feel there may be not as much information. Something that has been talked about is, I've heard rumors just from various people, about an X block or something that's going on, just as a period where people, more activities can meet, and I think that'd be beneficial as, and whenever that's going on, because normally, I don't know if it'd be more than just these Fridays, but having activities that can either meet after school or just on Fridays is a bit, can be a bit difficult at some times, if someone can just can't meet it and they rotate every week. But I think that new implement will help our extra cricket as well, which, yeah, I just think it'd be good for the students. But I do feel that the trimester scheduling is going well.
Good. Thank you. As you can tell, we are, it's paramount that we continue that discussion and discourse on that, and we're gonna do that, not only from a committee perspective, but from the administration as well as the students. That's why we want to show it works, actually. Go ahead.
I got a question.
Sure.
I had a flat tire one day, and a young man fixed my tire, and he sat talking about school, and he feels that the way Quabin is structured now, he wouldn't have been able to graduate because he's... Do you feel we're focusing way more on the top end than the bottom end? You know, or is it evenly spread out still?
Should we grant? Yes. I feel that Quabin is progressing a lot more towards the IB and scheduling a bit more around the IB, but I feel that also it's a bit, we can't really do that because as the type of school we are, we have to focus on both ends. And I know that people think that everyone, some people think that everyone can do IB and that people can excel in these classes. I don't think the IB format is the right situation for everyone, so I don't feel like they'd be able to go into that, so. And as a public school, we have to accept all types of people and all types of thinking. So I feel it is a bit more biased towards the higher end at the moment. And this has been a conversation that has been wrought frequently among students and teachers, just what's going on, and we all feel kind of the same. It's probably not possible, but if Quabin could get like a separate section for these specific IB students that are trained in the ninth to 10th grades for IB, for IB style and IB learning, I feel that would be, and then continue that separately in a separate area, I think that'd be effective, but I don't think, I'm not sure if it's possible.
So point broadly, you feel the school committee should put some attention and see, examine the situation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I agree with what you just said. We work with all students as we get choices, and we wanna make sure our students succeed. At the same time, stretch our students as best as we can to reach those potentials and not just from a perspective to say, you know, potentially, this is just good enough. We went on to work at all levels, so yes, it works on all levers and levels, absolutely. But that's what we need, feedback. Thank you.
Let me ask to yours, Karen.
Good.
And I underscore the fact that you said choices.
Yes.
And that's what I want to see the students have, choices. Let them have choices.
Thank you. Thank you. See you next month. Taking out of order, I'd like to have the report on the February trip to Italy. Don't worry, come close, it's okay, we're not gonna bite. Take your time. Would love to hear, because as you can hear, we support our students going on all over the world and students coming here to learn from us and from you. It is very important for you to tell how the experience we is in last summer.
So we have five kids with us that went on the trip to Italy, and I, we talked a little bit beforehand. I'll just kinda give you an idea what the itinerary was, what they did during the course of the week, and they can give you some of their impressions of what they got on the trip. We left here on March 12th, uh, March 12th, February 12th for the weekend to February vacation. We flew into Milan, and then we spent the first two nights we were there in Padua, and a full day in Venice the next day, which was during Carnival, so it was extremely crowded in Venice. But they got the opportunity to see the city, they were able to go on a gondola ride, and you know, they really had a good time that day. From Venice, we went to Florence. We spent two nights in Florence, saw the, you know, the different art, the arts. We saw the cathedral and Michelangelo's works in Florence, which was an absolutely gorgeous city, and they had the opportunity to be there. From there, we went to Assisi for a night and spent a day in Assisi. We went from Assisi to Pompeii, and we spent a day in Pompeii, and then we spent two days in Sorrento on the Amalfi Coast, which is absolutely gorgeous, and all the orange trees and lemon trees were absolutely filled with fruit that time of year, and I can just imagine what it must be like in the spring when the blossoms are out.
It was a nice year, too.
Yeah. And it wasn't overly warm while we were over there. We had highs in the low 50s and lows in the, and lows in the upper 30s, but it was still better than zero, because that's what it was here. And we had a great time in Sorrento, and we went from there, we spent an afternoon in Naples, and then from Naples, we went to Rome for two days. They were able to see the Colosseum, they were able to see the Forum, they had a tour of the Vatican museums and the Sistine Chapel and St. Peter's Basilica, and we really had a wonderful time for the, you know, seven or eight days that we were actually in Italy. And we had 23 kids that went with us and three chaperones, myself included. We went with EF Tours, who we've worked with for a number of years, who really makes everything very easy for us. We just simply follow their lead, and they really take care of everything for us, and they did a wonderful job. And the 23 kids that went were the most wonderfully behaved kids that I have dealt with in a very long time, and I've said that to them. They were always where they were supposed to be when they were supposed to be there. They were always polite, they were always appropriate, and we were very proud to have our students with us in Italy. They made us very proud in terms of how they handled themselves, no matter where we were, whether it was, you know, St. Peter's Basilica or Pompeii. They were wonderful. So maybe you guys could give them some impressions of... Well, Mary, what was your favorite part of the trip?
Um...
And I'm sorry, this is Mary Ramilar, Mackenzie Ryan, Johanna Allen, Jordan Newcomb, and Lindsay LeBlanc. They're all seniors. So what was your favorite part, Mary?
She's not, she's not a senior.
You're not a senior? Oh, goodness. What was your favorite part, Mary?
Probably Florence, just because we had a lot of time there. We got to like go where we wanted most of the time, and there was a lot of shopping. Just, and our hotel was in a really good spot, so we could just leave whenever, and we were right in the city.
Yeah, Florence, we stayed in a 14th century palace. The hotel was a refurbished 14th century palace, which was right in the center of one of the main squares. Mackenzie, what was your favorite part?
I really liked Pompeii. I wanted to go there since I was younger. I liked the history of it, so that was pretty cool to actually be able to go.
Johanna?
My favorite part was Sorrento. I really liked it. It was a kind of smaller city. It was right on the coast, which was really beautiful. The bus ride to get there was pretty interesting. The road was basically like right on a cliff, so that was a little, wasn't that too Heenan Heights?
I wouldn't get on the bus.
Yeah. So, but it was really beautiful there, and the lemon trees were awesome. They had huge lemons like that big. Never seen a lemon that big before, so I don't know. It was really awesome.
Jordan?
My favorite part was Venice. I liked seeing the glass glowing demonstration, and I liked the gondola ride. It was just really pretty. And I liked Sorrento, too, because it was, we were right on the coast, and the hotel was beautiful, and the lemon trees, the big lemons. But everywhere we went was a good experience.
Last but not least, Lindsay?
I'd actually agree with Mary on Florence as my favorite, because there was so much to do there, and it just, I think like walking down the streets in Florence is like the definition of a little Italian city. I think scenery-wise, I think Assisi was my favorite, because it was like up on the mountains, like in the hills, and it was just a beautiful place.
So thank you very much for giving them that opportunity to see that. We try to go on a trip like this every couple of years, and this was the first time we've gone on a trip, I think, in quite a while, just to Italy. So thanks to the school committee for allowing them that opportunity, and if anybody has any questions of them, feel free to ask. They're not bashful, are you guys?
How many guys went?
Three.
Three.
Three out of 22. Did they come back?
When you were in Florence, did you see, I was thinking many years ago when I was there, there was actually more than one David that Michelangelo had crafted, and I, my recollection was that Florence has a number of them, sitting around. Did you see more than one David, or is it just the one there?
Well, we saw one there was like in the plaza, and then there was the museum with the act, like the one that everybody knows.
Right.
But I couldn't find that museum, so.
Couldn't really.
No.
But a lot of kids, did any, did any of you guys get the chance to go to the museum?
Yeah, I don't, yeah. It was awful.
The neat thing about they have, when, you know, they said in Florence, they had a lot of free time. The way EF Trips does it, they have a very chock-full schedule, but there's sometimes two- and three-hour clips of time where they're given parameters of where they can go and what they can do, and they go in groups of at least two and hopefully more than two to do some of these things. And it was really nice to see our kids manage themselves in European cities where English is not spoken, and again, be able to be where they're supposed to be on time every time. They really managed themselves really, really well, and it says a lot about them. It says a lot about the education they received over the past 10 or 12 years, that they're capable of going to another part of the world, having the confidence to move around a city and do what they want to do, and see what they'd like to see, and be able to take that experience and have that for the rest of their lives. So again, I thank you to the school committee for giving them that opportunity.
Another problem, I just got one quick question. Because of the cities are so old and the history they have, did you, were you amazed at the architecture, the streets, the design, and the smallness of it, especially sidewalks?
Especially in Venice.
Yeah, definitely.
Did that give any kind of inspiration or awe of looking at maybe some of the architectural way and how some of that came over to our country, even though we're only a couple hundred years old? But those cities are old and centuries, and it's amazing how not only do they flourish in the arts and in everything else, but also the culture. So would you recommend this trip to other students?
Yes.
Not just Quabin students, but other students? Would you recommend it?
Yes.
Would you go back again sometime in your life? So not having, so having that experience gives you an enlightenment to travel, but also to see and learn other cultures. Do you agree or disagree?
I agree.
I agree.
Those are the handles, yeah?
Did you get to talk to people, like local people, and did they talk to you about relatives they had here? Because there's so, so many Italians in North America, in Boston and New York.
I found that a lot of Italians are very open, and they pick out the Americans very easily. So, they, they had no problem coming up and talking to us and learning about like where we were from and stuff, so that was cool.
Did they know what Massa, where Massachusetts was?
Some of them did, and then others had no idea.
We also traveled with, we had a guide with us 24/7, who was an Italian, a native of Rome.
Okay.
So the kids got to spend time with somebody all week long, too, that got us around that, that was, that was Italian. And he, he had great conversations, I think, sometimes with the kids. He was, you know, to kind of go on what you were saying, Mr. Brophy, he was fascinated by the conversations he could have with us, because he saw the connection of Western civilization and culture, and he saw that there really wasn't a big difference between what happens in Italy and what happens in the United States, based on culture, because we're all connected. And, and I hope he had conversations like that with the kids, to show them that connectedness.
Was the food what you thought it would be? Did it surprise you, or any impressions on that?
Pasta every night.
But the lasagna was good.
Lasagna was really good.
Razzo balls.
Razzo balls, you like the razzo balls?
Well, you're a vegetarian, Mary.
I am.
Just to let you know that the French students did not care for American cuisine. They just say that everything in America is big. We took that as an insult initially, thinking it was talking about our obesity issues. And basically, what they really meant was, they said they can't believe all of our cars are so huge, and our stores are huge, and our malls. And so they were really impressed with how big everything was in America, and that our cooking was not to their liking. So I'm glad you liked Italian cuisine, because the French were really not impressed with ours.
The French are never impressed with anything.
Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you.
Again, I think we all know, around the table, thank you for supporting, thank you for supporting our school. Subcommittee reports, administrative review?
Nope.
Audit, we're all set on that. Family building, shell. Okay, budget?
We had a meeting, yeah, two nights ago. And we had a presentation by Cheryl, which basically, you know, we had put out a preliminary budget of, you know, 35 million, $20,000 in change, that we had envisioned. It was sort of like our needs and wants type of budget that we had proposed. We talked a little bit about what was alluded to earlier, the nine C cuts that are impacting Quaupin. And, and they're really significant. But there may be some restoration of Chapter 71, perhaps, and we may know that within the next couple of weeks, which is a loss of like $225,000. A kindergarten grant, which lost roughly $21,000.
And Slade to lose another 100 in FY16.
And these are the governor's nine C cuts, discretionary cuts. Like, you know, the budget deficit is going from a billion to 1.5 to 1.7, to wherever it is at this particular point in time in the state. This is our particular hit on this, and hopefully some of it's going to be restored. And we talked about some budget deficits in specific areas, you know, special education tuition, special education legal, the health insurance, the unemployment, which was, you know, talked about before. The bigger, the bigger picture for, you know, FY16 is, is really, you know, the percentage that the state's gonna kick in to, a percentage of our total revenue, the state's gonna kick in. And if you take a look back a couple of years ago, you know, Cheryl presented some data that it was 55% of, of our total, of our total revenue need to support the budget. FY15 was 54%, and we're looking at a preliminary number of, I think it's 49%, which, you know, hasn't been finalized yet. We should know, I would think, you know, the 15th, I think it's.
The 15th, we're gonna see the preliminary house budget, and then we don't know all the amendments that will go in after that. That's why we're gonna be asking the committee for a meeting on the 27th of April. We should have the house budget at that point, and to be able to get better assessments to the towns.
But if it stayed, you know, if it stayed as it is, I mean, our proposed budget of $35 million would, with the state shortfall and, and the other shortfalls extending over to the nine C cuts, the assessment percentage for the towns would be, you know, totally unacceptable. So we really have to take a look at, you know, probably somewhere in the vicinity of a couple million dollars plus in cuts going forward. You know, we talked about, you know, opportunities to increase revenue, which a number of things might get a, relate to state reps and senators, fully fund Chapter 71. I think we've been doing that for a while, right? So you can't guarantee we're gonna make a lot of progress on that, especially in a lean budget year for the state. Include the use of the balance of E and D. School choice, expanding school choice, which looks like an area that obviously we have some, some slots in certain classes, so we could do a little bit of marketing on that, and pushing in possibilities, labor and districts. What, what I think we're gonna do on the 27th, after we get the final numbers, 15th, is we really have to take a look at some, as I call it, a cafeteria plan of cuts. I mean, what, what, where, so we can bring something to the actual meeting, I don't know if on the 27th, but enough, maybe a subsequent meeting, as to what we can actually move on. Capital projects, we've got $950,000 budget for capital projects over, for this coming year. Requested a number of positions that, you know, we had initially felt were needed. That's another 359. So I mean, what I'm talking to, we get 950 and 359, we're up to like 1.2. So there's gonna have to be some, a little bit more innovative thought going into this process. Reduce force, which, which nobody wants to do, or increase class, you know, it winds up increasing class size, which in, in some towns, you know, you know, might be able to happen, but in other towns, we're already, we have folks that are concerned about certain grades and class size. And then, you know, a hard look at, do we use our resources a little differently, which we've talked about two or three years down the road? Maybe we really have to put this, as Maureen said, you know, on a fast track and move it along a little quicker. Which would take, you know, some, some expedited meetings and discussions, but it's, doesn't look like, you know, I mean, wherever you are in the state, it doesn't look like it's gonna be a, a very good year, but it looks really lean for us going forward.
Couple of questions. Demographic study, when is that anticipation of that preliminary mission for us?
I had, I had, I had that conversation with our, the agency that's working on that. Jess and I are giving them some additional information, because we want some more specifics in the demographic study, which would deal with each individual town, what's the guestimate of their individual growth relative to the whole? Because that's really important over time. They expect within two weeks, once Jess provides them with some facility data, which we do have available to us, and so we'll be giving them some information. And they believe that within two weeks upon receipt of that, I'm hoping that they will receive that either Friday or Monday. And so we're hoping that by the 27th, if we're really lucky, if we're really lucky, we could have a report close to that time. If not, I'm definitely assured that it'll be the first week of May.
Okay, so on the 27th, for the committee, I think we.
We'll need a full school committee.
I think we should have a full committee.
We need to set the bottom line budget.
One item is the budget?
Yes.
Is the budget, is it, is a whole committee?
Yes.
Okay, on the 27th, that's a Monday, I know it's a Monday evening.
Which again, it may be something you can take with towns after.
Yes, oh yes, we will still continue to work with the towns.
Of course.
Going forward.
You, you were saying about the menu, the perspective, you'll know a little bit more from the budget, our next piece of information. Do you like 6:30? Do you want 7:00, or do you want?
6:30.
6:30? Any okay for 6:30?
Sure.
6:30, okay. 5:30, we'll do that.
I thought we had to go after 6:00.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
The entire meeting.
Entire meeting. Got a budget? You said 6:00? No, well, it was a full.
So 6:30, we.
It appeared it was comfortable at 6:30. Okay, am I thinking else? Ah, that's really the, that's your plate for.
That's really the challenge. Which I'm sure Whistler and every other school visitor is going to go through a similar situation.
Absolutely, nine C cuts to this, like everybody else, hurts all of us. And then the other redistribution of monies in these quality kindergarten grants, things like that, that just don't make sense for what we call educational sound practice, early childhood, I understand, but there's other pieces here. And then I'm not here to please, to make any political statements, but when you read the papers, and you talk about the chairman, and they're looking at, and Baker's not, is not shy to say, we will have, we will have discussions of child souls. So it's not, he's not shy in saying that. He's not asking about, not talking about early childhood and care and quality education. Just, just an adoration, nothing else. Observation. But, um. Anything else? Thank you. And Central Office on solar.
Yeah, we got a subcommittee meeting on the 1st of April. We met with three entities, or representatives of three entities. And a couple, Resolution Solar and Clean Energy, they're like, they're very similar to what we have now with SolarCity. And Cheryl advised you that SolarCity's a little delayed, obviously, as to getting online, but hopefully we should be, we're there pretty soon. So both Resolution and Clean Energy are sending us some information, and a few different nuances, but I, I think that's something that, once again, the subcommittee, once we get all in for it, can bring to the full committee. And my feeling is if we wanted to do something with either of those two, I think Cheryl, the covering RFQ that we have out there, these would fit under that one, I believe, right?
And actually, the term is we wouldn't need to do that, there's another method to go and get the next meter of credits now.
Okay. The third one, and, and we spoke, I think, two or three months ago, Charlie and I met with this, with this bright, Brightergy, and that's the one that involves the carports. And we met with representatives of, of this group, and this is something I think we'd like to bring to the full committee, for the full committee's consideration, because although there are some nice things about this, it obviously is putting something physical on our property, if we wanted to build that route. And to me, for the subcommittee to, you know, to, to get the briefing, we did get a briefing, that's all fine, but I think, you know, for consideration, if the committee really wanted to consider this type of thing, I think it would be something where we should have the, have Brighter, Brighter, Brightergy come in and make a presentation to the full group. Obviously, if you, if we go this route and put carports, essentially for lack of a better term, on our parking lots, this is a physical presence there, and there are maybe some benefits, but, you know, obviously there might be some, some negatives, too. So I think I'd like to allow the full committee to bet this group is very happy to come and make a presentation. You know, they made a point of saying, geez, if, you know, we discussed if there was gonna be anything built, if we were gonna build this route at Quaupin, then, you know, summertime is obviously the, you know, the time to do this. Because they talked about, you know, three months, you know, to, to put this structure in. So just like anybody else, they'd rather get, they're, they would rather get something done sooner, or a commitment sooner rather than later. But to me, it's not something that I want to rush into, in other words, I would like the full committee to, to do, to, to at least vet these people. Now, if the committee's sitting here and saying, you know what, it might sound good, but, you know, really no way in heck do we want to put something on our parking lot, then that's fine, if you want to give me the sense of that now, and I can just get back to these people and say, you know, we're really not interested. A couple benefits, for lack of a better term. One, they have like a whole educational setup around these. I mean, they have real-time stuff, the kids can come in, they can, they can monitor electric, the electric rates going on, and, and, you know, we meet with these people, and one thinks that, you think you kind of have an idea of what all this solar stuff is about, and then every entity we meet with learns something different, you know, G3 rates and these rates. And somebody says, oh, are you paying this much, because I can get, you know, the transformer down on this and blah blah. It's like, holy crow, it's, you need to take, we should be teaching a course, we can major our kids in this kind of stuff. And they'll probably get jobs up, coming right out of high school. And so, you know, when somebody comes in and say, well, we'll give you no transmission charges, no escalation, no distribution charges, and you're thinking, okay, well, do we have those under our contract, because we're getting a certain percentage? So there are some benefits that they're touting, that, you know, some no charges, some educational stuff. But obviously, the bottom line for us is, are we gonna get?
Money.
Money, yeah, I said, or the credits to, you know, to, to offset our, our payments. And so they said they would put, put something together and, and present it to us, and I guess it's like you get a sense of, is it something you, you'd like to visit, or, you know, have visited upon us, or are you pretty much feeling, you know, we, we just don't want to do anything like this? Now, they do stuff on roofs, too, but, and I, and I think Steve brought this out at the last meeting, if we did something on either OCAM or Rubbles, which are our two newest roofs, you know, the towns, we need to get the towns involved, it's their buildings, even though we lease them. And a group, one of the groups met with OCAM to discuss, and kind of they said, go, you know, go talk to the school committee, go talk to the district. So I, I'm not sure where the towns might get this. And I guess I would have no problem with doing something and said, geez, you know, we split it with you, if that's what you want to do, to, to the town entities themselves. Or the towns might just say, you know, if you're putting on a school, you know, if there's an offset, you guys go with them. We haven't had any discussion with the towns. But in, in conversing with the Brightergy, we kind of said, you know, let's, let's really back around to the towns, I know you've talked about them, because that might be a, a whole different, a whole different setup. So, I mean, are we all willing to li, to listen to this group, or we can bring them into the May School Committee meeting? Is that, if that's the case, or?
I certainly.
I'd like to get an idea.
I certainly would recommend that we at least pursue it to the point of understanding what we're talking about when we talk about carports. Because initially, you know, when, when people said that to me, I said, that's just dumb. And then when we looked at, at least the pictures, and we had, they had the, like you said, the presentation, because I heard one before, the one that you just heard, and I said, hmm, worthy of, worthy of at least to look see. We're worried about, well, what about all the snow in New England? Do you have them in New England? Where, what do they look like? They claim they have some set up over in Auburn area on some of the car dealerships. I don't, I don't know if that's true, that was my recollection. You know, I, I think we would have to look at them. Cheryl says what happens if the snow and ice fall off on Evan's car, that's parked under the carport. You know, what, and so, when you, they show you the pictures, it looks perfectly aesthetically, beautiful. But I think, I, I think that there's an expectation from the communities that we would consider, you know, the most, you know, so to say, up-to-date opportunities in solar and energy conservation measures. So I think we should listen to the conversation and have the committee versed enough to make a decision. I think, like you say, it's really hard to appreciate it unless you're really here to hear it.
Thanks.
I for one, okay, I don't care the amount of money that we can generate from this, but I think that putting those things in our parking lot would be an atrocity. I've already seen what they have done to the golf course, where it is.
Oh no, this is the very different thing.
Solar panel?
Yeah, well, I mean, as far as the carport itself, I would have absolutely, I said exactly the same thing until I saw the pictures and the video, and I said, oh, that's very different than what I thought it was gonna be.
I've seen some very good women on pictures.
I don't know where it was all with that, but.
However, on that, on that held up, when we, when we had a discussion, Charlie, they were going to email Charlie, three companies that had utilized them, and, and he was gonna have discussion with them. Supposedly, there is one, they didn't build, but it would be the contractor who they would use, or one of the contractors. It's all in, in Natick on, on the backside of the Natick Mall, so I was going to take a ride someday and just maybe get some pictures of it, or.
I mean, as we all know, go ahead, yes, yes.
I think we make a motion that we ask them to come and talk to us, because I feel it's our duty to investigate. We're desperate need of money.
Okay, I don't think, I don't, I don't think we need a, a vote on it, I think that if we as a committee.
He said consensus.
Well, hold on a second, I'm thinking maybe, but listen, I'm saying if we listen, and if attention, I mean, we all can pay attention to details, see what the product is. Again, you look at features, advantages, and benefits, where they are, where they're not. It's part of being in, we're getting educated. So if we, if we don't want to get educated and just say no, we're already in the pool a bit by looking at solar credits and everything else. We're already there in some degree. Now looking at what are the fullest extents we might do or not do, Tex? Absolutely, to look at every.
Seth Ross.
Oh, no, no, I'm just thinking, do we need a formal vote, or do you think that we could go with a presentation and keep it tight, so we, and we can have an understanding of where we potentially may want to go? We're not going to make a decision on May, correct? There's no decision, but to get educated. Steve?
Yeah, obviously, it's worth having, you know, more information than that. But one concern I have is, are we going to be prepared as a full committee to answer the questions, you know, to, ask the questions that need answering?
I think when they make the presentation, I mean, you know, when Charlie and I just said, we, we throw out the questions, obviously, and Murray covered some, and you also, Mark also said, you know, the snow falls over, and there were discussions, they said, you know, we need to measure stuff out, because we know, you know, we need the plow in the wintertime, certain, certain height of the plow, or maybe the smaller dump trucks, et cetera. The, one of the individual, one of the individuals had actually driven through our parking lot a couple hours earlier, just observing, you know, he said, oh, I see you have this type of truck and this, this type of tractor there. And so they were already talking about how they would measure stuff out, spacing, and so, yes, I think if he makes a presentation, obviously, one of the things you're going to say is, you know, what's our, what's our cut out of this? I mean, let's, let's be mercenary, what's our cut? Because we're getting about 31% or whatever from, from SolarCity. And these others might be, you know, they come in and say, you can do this wonderful thing, it'll be gleaming, it'll look, blah, 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 blah. It's only going to be 15%. You know, obviously, what's the trade-off here? What are we really getting out of this, aside from, you know, something being put up in our parking lots? And the other thing they were talking about is they're not talking all the parking lots. Because we had discussions of, I said, you know, the teachers lot, not used as much, it's further up there. I mean, we use it for the soccer fields, maybe, maybe in the, in the autumn, but really, a lot of that lot is not used unless there's, there's a game on, on field hockey or baseball or something. And then there's the other lot, near the football field, once again, game time not used as much. Unfortunately, I want to say unfortunately, but they really like the, you know, the lot right next to the school, because they talked about electrical connections, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, once again, they'll, they make a presentation, it's easy enough to say, you know, oh, what does this mean, or why are you doing this, or, or, yeah, I don't think there is, they're here to edu, I mean, really, they're here to educate. I mean, that's, that's part of their whole thing, because they go, he said, he said, he's made a lot of presentations to the school districts and to schools, and he said, part of the thing is, nobody knows what we're doing. We come in and say, we're doing this, and they say, what? And he said, that's part of the education. And he mentioned a couple districts that are, that are mulling it over, and I want to say Lunenburg was one.
Lunenburg's building a new high school, which is going to be opening, I think, not this fall, but next fall, so maybe that's part of that process.
Well, I think he said, there, I think, I thought he talked about their lot near wherever the, you know, football field or wherever one of the athletic fields was. So I, so he was keying in on that area. And then what was the other one? Auburn's building a new high school.
Middle school.
Middle school, and he, and he talked about that, and then what was the other one? Grafted, which has a relatively new high school, I think. He said they were talking to people there too. So they're talking to schools, but he, they don't, I said.
Well, we have a lot of parking lots that a lot of the days of the year totally empty.
Totally empty, is there any upfront cost to the district?
No.
They foot the bill? Is it a lease? Do they lease the land? How, how is that, what kind of rights?
Essentially, it would be, well, I mean, essentially, it'd be a 20-year, it would be a contract. All these things pretty much run seven years. And then there was discussion whether after 20 years, if, you know, we wanted to own it, I mean, I guess there were those possibilities or something, or we can, we can roll the lease over for X amount of time, et cetera. But no, we don't, we don't spend anything.
One of the nice things with the net metering, obviously, is everything's off-site.
Right.
If it, if it falls apart, like the first time it fell apart, we walked away, we were out any savings we might have.
Right, you're right.
This here, if they come in and they start and install, something happens now, there's a lot more concerns when it's.
Which is, which I, which is why I want to bring to the full committee as opposed to, you know, just coming and saying, oh, we recommend this or that.
And one thing with the, Texas concerned with the looks, I've seen these parking lots, you know, it's not like you're taking a green space now, it's, it's already, asphalt isn't pretty to look at. And it, you know, there's actually a benefit to the cars that park underneath, because you're not getting beaten by the sun all day. It's, and if they're done right, they don't, they look, they look fine.
Yeah, they really do, I mean, they're.
It's the size of. It's something we have to obviously.
Yeah, right, so, I got to eat it.
I was just thinking liability insurance, is that something we ought to talk about?
Does he? Does Cheryl see?
Your people are into that.
I'm going to tell people, think the same way. So we ought to at least have a conversation to just make sure, I don't know what the cost would be.
But once again.
It's going to be some type of a cost.
That would be a question asked, you know, these are all good questions.
Well, we may want to have that question directly to our insurance company.
They may have no idea what this is even means.
Well, they must, they're, but, you know, if, if they're at the Natick Mall, somebody's concerned about liability there.
Steve, where have you seen them?
At the Natick Mall. Should we forward you a list of our concerns, and you can roll them up to whoever's coming, that way they know what they're going to address?
Roll them to Cheryl.
Okay, you know.
Okay, Bill, and then I'll, I'll look at them, yeah. That's a great idea, great idea.
I like the educational benefit of it, and I think it's for our students to be here, so we buy net metering, but that's like, okay, what, what does that mean to anyone? Because it's off-site, here we're demonstrating we're agreeing with school. I think it also helps, you know, that reduces the heat of the runoff into the streams nearby in the summertime, rather than the sun blazing down on the pavement, you cut down on that. So I think there's a lot of other advantages there also.
And the other thing to remember, I don't know if it'll benefit us, but under SREC two, there's, there's that decreasing order, if you're putting something up in a field, the, you know, nobody gets the hot, a high percentage like, like used to under SSEC, SREC one. If you're putting it up on a roof, parking lot, a brown field, et cetera, where really nothing can grow, all the entities, well, the people building it get more money, so one would think that, you know, those who are getting the, the net credits would get more, more credits too. I mean, I logically won't say that.
Now, this is, this does not go to national grid, this actually is electricity we use?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't go to the.
It does.
It does go to, and then they, yeah. Yeah, then there's all, there's different zones now, where there's, it used to be, I mean, under the, the original conversation we had, I think, two or three years ago, it's like, well, you can buy something for somebody in Plymouth or whatever. Now they're zoned differently, so you really can't do that anymore. So I guess if it's in your backyard, there's some benefit there too, as opposed to, we still have to be in a zone one, like, like under SolarCity, they're on the other side of Northampton, so they're still within our zone. But I don't know if we could go into like Worcester or anyplace south. I mean, I don't, I don't have the zone thing, but that's, that's what these people are talking about. Two more things, both of these are news things. Number one, I read in the Globe two days ago, there's a whole big article on how the solar people are agitating to get, to bump up the limit, so that they could, they could build more solar stuff, and how utilities are saying, oh geez, we don't think that's a good idea. So that, that's something in play. And the other interesting thing, which I found, that I just wanted to get on the phone, was in, at Shepherd's Hill, Charlemagne Dudley area, Nexamp, who was the one who chooshed us in our contract, got rejected by a planning board meeting, where they had given somebody the approval to put, to put a solar field in, but they rejected Nexamps. And there's a whole big bruhaha going on down, it was in today's telegram, but also yesterday's telegram. Right or wrong, I don't know, but I kind of smiled with that.
I think your, I think the consensus is there, we'll get educated, so we don't need a formal vote. I think we'll do that for May meeting, if we can get that.
Sure.
Questions to Cheryl, and tighten them up, and then we'll give them to Lee as well, and I think we can, and again, all we're doing is taking a look, we're not finding anything, we're just saying, you're absolutely right, we're just seeing what the dynamic, what does it look like, and, you know, what district's potential might be looking. We're not making a decision right now. Okay? Collect the bargaining, or I'll send it this time?
Two on, just two ongoing things.
Okay.
Well, not just, but the cafeteria workers and the towers, because they just want the situation.
So we're in, we're in negotiation.
Correct.
Plant facilities.
We had a meeting tonight, that was well-attended, and we talked about winter storm damage first, and Claire and the staff did a good job, and we had some leaks and some ice damage, but we survived. And the file guy did a real good job, and the guys who shoveled the snow for us did a herculean task, and tasks can survive, so that's good. And then we talked about the effect of the FY16 year budget on the plant facilities, and Claire says we'll survive, it won't be pretty, but we'll survive, and so on. And we kind of talked about solar too, and didn't get too excited about anything, because no money's coming in yet, so. We're glad to see we're proceeding. And the plan for the facility use, we're having a meeting next month, and maybe look over the Wakeworth area and see what we can think about how to use it.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
And then we.
Are the fields rounding into shape for sprint scoots? Is there an issue with those?
Yeah.
Still wearing the snow.
Cross-country skiing this year?
Yeah. They're, they're in terrible condition, they're not playing.
Walking on water.
So is there going to be a delay or cancellation?
We're already in delay, five or six games, trying to put there at the end of the season. We thought we might be ready for, for April vacation, but it looks very unlikely. We're playing some of our games on turf fields that have been made available to us by other school districts. We're not alone. The Connie Mack Field in Spencer is now ready and available, and Ted Kamola has indicated that they might be moving some of our games there. North Grove South Grove has been very, very generous in allowing all districts from Rollout, you know, I think it's, they're, we're playing a lot, not we are just, but other places, we're paying a lot, a lot of money in busing. I understand most of our games have been away, and busing is very expensive, and so we're really, you know, Tex, we're all worried about that, because it doesn't look like we're going to be home for a while. I mean, if you take a look, the fields are, they're not playable. And you've got the softball program, and you've got the baseball programs, and other places have.
Track.
Well, track's not quite so bad, if it's just the track, it's just that they can't do any of the other stuff.
Right, the jogging.
And field park.
And our fields, obviously, we're not getting them seeded, we're not getting any attention to them, so that by fall, they'll be in really good shape, because they take a terrible heat in the fall. So it's not going to be, I mean, we're, we're kind of stuck in a.
Softball's always lasting, melting, and they're, they still got a pile of snow out there.
I know.
Softball.
Oh, yeah. Well, and the snow today, while it was small, it's just more water, more water when it's cold, you know, cold. So we're hoping a little bit for some warm weather next week, which is predicted. But I think we're getting more rain tomorrow, I think some showers tomorrow with a little warmer temperature, so this is not going to, this is the worst I've ever seen it, as far as having fields ready and playable for kids.
Okay, Lee? That was my question.
Our parking lots are very necessary during these times, so I don't know if they've sold them out, but.
Maybe they could flip out.
Well, while that, you know, on our, on our parking lots, rolling around and stuff.
Okay, Lori?
The gym doors, someone had mentioned this winter that they were having trouble getting that open, and the sidewalk can't be ground anymore, has that resolved or so?
No, we ground it some more, we ground it some more. We've been grinding them for 10 years.
Yeah, yeah, someone had just said, oh, and I guess it can't be ground anymore, and frosty and getting bigger.
No, we did grind again, and again, and again. We, it's really hard, is because you've got to tape off all the doors, because you'll set up all the smoke detectors.
Oh.
Yeah, Lori?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Nick. Policy review.
There's just one policy, Mr. Chairman, on the table, which is the domestic violence relief policy, which is a statutory requirement, and it's been on the table for in excess of 30 days. We recommend if we move from the table and vote.
So moved, Lori seconded. Any further questions, comments? Nope, all in favor? Opposed? Suspicious? Thank you. Special education. Okay, will it be a month, I mean, I just want to take, I want to take you, just to follow up with where we're at. That'd be great. Technology.
We had a meeting on Wednesday with Andrew, it had been quite a while since we met. The Aspen parent portal rollout was the first issue that we wanted to look at, and the way things are set up in Aspen, we're going to roll that out a little slower. The biggest thing is to make sure when parents are given access to something, I can't see your kids.
Right.
And I can see all of my kids. That's the first thing, is when they, they do release that to, I think you said they're going to start with the middle school first, and like I have a kid in Hardaway and a kid in the middle school, I will be able to see both of my kids, but if you don't have, if you only have kids in the elementary school, that'll be later. But they just really need to make sure that the kids are matched up to the right families, first of all. And once they know that, you've contacted the school, and then they'll do the next piece and the next piece. And so it's, it's a rollout process, it's going to take about 18 months. But we'll be able to see grades, any schedules, absences, who to contact for each class, student report cards when they're posted, and proper support, and you'll be able to directly email the teachers right there in Aspen, instead of having to keep track of each email address. There are some issues with real-time access and how that's going to affect our teachers, and what parents are expecting is realistic after a student writes a paper, compared to what's actually realistic for a teacher to post that progress. So a parent information night will probably be useful before that rollout happens. Aspen's an open platform, which means it's usable across multiple operating systems, so whether you have Apple at home, or Windows, or whatever you use, and they also actually have a mobile platform, so that parents can get in on their mobile devices once they have access to that. All of our students are wanting to be getting access to Office 365, and that should happen in the next few months, which includes access at home, so we can maintain that open platform continuity between home and school. Because it's cloud-based, it's not like, you know, we have Office 13 at home, and that might not be the same thing at school, and so PowerPoint presentations don't interface. Since it's cloud-based, it'll be the same for everyone.
Did I hear correctly, what does that mean? That there's X amount of free?
Five.
Five.
Five, five devices.
Five, up to having Office 65, so.
Yeah.
Can be updated for five devices.
Right.
That's pretty good, zero costs.
That's great. Part of making that happen was streamlining all the student usernames and passwords. And I think he said there's one school that they still are trying to get that ironed out. At this time, there's no major hits to technology in the budget, but we really, really, really need the data integration specialist, and that doesn't feel very optimistic right now, but this person is really important, because they help ensure the effective use of technology for instructional purposes, and that's a quote from Sheila, I believe. So, you know, we, we really want to see that back in the budget, but it's not promising. There's one lab left to rewire at Ruggles, the others have been finished, so we are fully utilizing our bandwidth. It is holding, when the demand gets high, they've actually segmented it, and they can shut off the BYOD, the bring your own device, and leave what the teachers and the administration need, so that we're getting the full bandwidth needed for instruction, and they can cut off the BYOD, instead of everyone using their devices and the teacher not being able to put something on the smart board. The BYOD program is doing great, continuing to grow, the security's going really well. They do require users to agree to really specific contract terms when they enroll, so that if you're going to be on the BYOD Wi-Fi, you're not switching that off to go to restricted sites and use restricted content on your device. And then we talked about the park. There's the mandatory side, which we've all heard about, and then there's the diagnostic side, which we were asked to, or offered the chance to participate in the pilot program side, which we were asked to, or offered the chance to participate in the pilot program for that, and it was supposed to happen in December, and the state didn't sign off on it in time, so we did not get to participate in that, and there's supposed to be another round in April, and as of right now, or as of Tuesday, we still didn't know if that was going to happen either. So can't really take advantage of that benefit, which participating in that pilot would give us a discount because it's a paid-for-use program for that diagnostic tool, we'd get a discount for that, but apparently the state is not going to take it. I think that was about all we covered.
Thank you, it was a good meeting. Steve was there, Lori, Sheila did a wonderful job giving the information on the administration. We were at on technology and this. There are a lot of things happening, it's going to come up slow, and hopefully we don't, you know, have any bumps in the road with the budget and doing what we need to do. But just an observation, you know, when you talked about park, you know, here we don't know, the state would have to even make a decision where to go, and then you have the dynamic of the leaders, you have Pfizer, who's already come out going, why should we change when I like MCAS? So you have this dynamic that you have the board not knowing what direction, and then here we are, school districts trying to say, dealing what we have to deal with accountability, and are we going to go here or there? We did the right thing by staying with MCAS because that's where our platforms and our accountability is available to. So, you know, it's funny, when they say you can offer a pilot, and then you don't even open the door properly to let the districts in.
Well, in the park, the districts that participated in the park have had a very, very difficult time, very difficult time. The state was really not prepared on its end as well as they wished they had been, and some of the school districts who thought they were prepared and, you know, technology-wise ready, have not found themselves ready, so it's been a very, very difficult rollout, which is not unexpected. It's a big, big change in practice and so forth. And some of the schools are doing paper and pencil parts of park and then technology-oriented parts of park, so that's been confusing as well.
So thank you, Lori, stepping in and reporting out, and I'm glad to hear that the parent portal not only is sensitive in its rollout, but also sensitive to the teachers, the staff that will work, you know, how, what is real, what can happen, and what shouldn't be presumed or expected of analysis and assessment of a child's work. Thank you.
The state has a poor record of purchasing its technology and getting it out. I'm not just speaking education, but historically, the last few years, it's a whole newspaper accounts of millions of dollars of old runs, and then the darn thing, it doesn't even work properly. I don't know who's either purchasing this, or maybe there's flat-handling in there, I don't know, but it almost doesn't surprise me. Fortunately.
Well, the student information system, the new rollout, new components of that, it's difficult to add some. Andrew Spence, an incredible amount of his time trying to walk people through where we are with the state reporting. So many reports we have to do, they're all online, and almost, I would say, 50% of them seldom work a first, second, or third time. So it's been very difficult for us.
We did the budget, we've done the business, public comment? Seeing and hearing none in the audience? School committee concerns? Before I do that, can I just move over to just for one second, just to tell us what's in our packet that we have?
Yep, I put together a calendar of events, just so you will see what was going on in, mainly it was the high school, some of the Ratsi things that the school committees invited to, between their senior awards ceremony, the Memorial Day Assembly, which they do a remarkable job. This year, they're building a Statue of Liberty. It's a surprise. Last year, they did the, was it the two movie, "The Unknown Soldier"? Yeah, they did one, and school committees invited to that. I didn't have a lot of the elementary concerts, but I can add those in, and then I have school committee meetings, and what I have so far for town meetings and town elections. And I made a change to the 27th of April already, to 6:30 for the full committee meeting.
Full committee, 6:30, okay. I know, we'll keep this updated, but I think we started this a couple of years ago, and it's a good idea, that we have to see what, early on, to be able to hook in if you can, if you can, if you can attend any ceremonies, things like that. Our presence is welcome, not only in the schools, but to our students. We really are. We are welcomed, and we do appreciate and value what we see from our kids, where we can, if we can. School committee concerns? Lee?
Just briefly, I did attend the, I still attended the awards night, you know, I'll parrot what Cooper said, I thought it was extremely well-attended, I mean, really good crowd, I was pretty impressed. A couple of observations, when the awards were going out, I thought there was a greater diversity of subjects that awards went out, and there were even a couple like Saturday, and I looked at Cooper, I said, we teach that course, we have that course. Really, I was very surprised, and it was one that really shocked me, I can't think of what it is now. So I'll have to wait another trimester, I guess, but it was like, wow, I didn't even know we taught that course. So I think the comments and questions regarding, you know, greatest course offerings, et cetera, at least sitting there, listening to the kids getting their awards, I thought there was a greater diversity of awards. A number of kids, a good number received multiple awards, both for academic excellence and achievement, and I thought that was great. I mean, a number of kids just see, single, but still a number received multiple awards. And I was particularly impressed by a young lady who received five awards, and I believe, you can correct me, I think four of them were with IB courses, at least three were IB courses, and I think four might have been, and that was, five, I don't think.
Another one with several APs too.
Was it?
Yeah. So we had one with several IBs and one with several APs, and it's good to see that both are.
I mean, that led me away, five awards and so many others for IB, I thought, wow, that was great. So I think it was a great night, and I'm glad to see this, really, I think it was the best-attended night that I've seen.
The other story was fun.
Yeah.
Thank you. Seeing and hearing none, great. Yep, see, so obviously, the budget, it's another bleak budget year, it's been a bleak budget year for five years. I think, obviously, we're going to go to the towns with the budget they don't want to see. Because of that, I think we really need to start advancing quicker on what we do to our district, our plans, if anything.
Yes.
I'm not saying we have to change it all, but I think we should really move quickly on to see if there's anything we can do to alleviate some of the budget concerns. At this point, I believe, we're going to start heading into hurting our education, what we provide here with our budgets the way they are, and we need to react. Well said. Well said. And we'll hear more on the 27th, based on what we're looking at, and maybe look at that year, two years, please, you're absolutely right. One thing that we've done, when we get the demographic study back, and you've got to look at it and everything looks okay, can we provide that to the towns?
Oh, absolutely, but they will do a relatively large presentation, and I intend to invite all of the town officials, because, you know, having the presentation and then having, they'll have access to all of the data and information.
Yeah, so we're looking at games then?
Yes.
And that's on the fast track.
It's on the fast track.
Okay, thank you. New business, we have the school calendar. Before we go to the school calendar, if I can go out of order, if there's not an objection, the school choice perspective, because I'd like to hear from the superintendent, as well as, there'll be a motion on that as well.
There is a motion.
Yep, I would like to, openings at most schools, do you want to comment on it?
Well, there are openings at most grade levels, but those openings obviously are limited. We have some classes where we can absorb, you know, additional students, there are others where we cannot. Probably our most flexible grades are the middle and our high school programs, we do have room there. We will get very specific information from our principals as to exactly what's happening at various grades, and obviously, we will not accept school choice students in a situation that would give us, you know, 30 students in a room or something like that. I do expect, without the impact of school choice, there will be some large class sizes in some of our elementary schools. As you point out, the budget is relatively bleak, and whether or not we are able to add, well, we'll be moving around some teachers probably, but whether or not we'll be able to add staff, you know, drop our class sizes down to below 20s or 15s, I don't think is very likely at all. But at any rate, we will be very cautious about our school choice operation and ensure that, you know, our students, you know, our resident students have obviously the best and most appropriate access to the educational programs that we offer. And I certainly do recommend, obviously, that in accordance with state law, that we indicate that we will continue to operate as a school choice school.
Right, and that's by law, we have to, we're choice, school choice district unless we opt out. So we have a motion in front of us, yes, Dave? Is it correct that when we allow a school choice student in, it's their choice as how long they stay in our district?
Yes, yes.
So if we allow a first grader, they can be their whole group?
Yes, that's correct.
With that, and looking at the.
Demographics.
Demographics.
We have to fit it all together.
Yeah, it's, boy, it's attractive to look and say, well, let's bring a bunch of them in, we can really balance our classes locally. That could really handcuff us.
Especially if the demographics setting demonstrates a lot of variability in the years to come.
But I think we've done a very good job of.
We've worked hard at it.
Of handling that in the past five, 10 years, and it's really, it's really given us the ability to provide more diverse programs. It's been. So we have a motion in front of us, as, is there a motion to accept? So moved? So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second is Mr. Wiegler. On the record, it's a motion that in accordance with state law, requiring all schools to be open for school choice, the Quavon Regional School District accepts choice students for the 2015, 2016 academic year in grade levels where space is available. The administration will be cautious not to accept a number of choice students that would adversely affect district finances. As read, any further questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Extentions? Quick, Lori, you want to do the appointment of the district with the CAPS, and then we'll go to the calendar?
Yeah, it is necessary for the superintendent, or one of you, to serve on the CAPS collaborative board, and also the FLAC collaborative board. Currently, I represent the school district as a member of the CAPS collaborative board, and also the FLAC collaborative board, Sheila acting as the alternate in necessary situations. We were just asking for the appointment to be extended for another year. My favorite kind of meeting.
So moved, text, so moved.
Second. My only comment is that since you had a new thing on the board, that you put his thing.
I know, I know.
I see you eye contact. I know, I would. I'll get you next time.
Leave him alone. Second to the motion, seconded by Lee. Any other further questions, comments? All right, all in favor? Opposed? Extentions? And next item is the school calendar, calendar to the school year 2015, 2016. Lori?
The school calendar is pretty much standard as far as what it has been in the past. The change, it's not a change when compared to the last year, but there is that two-week, I will call it vacation recess period in December, around the holiday period, that being something that assists us in managing our oil usage and so forth for at least very cold months of the year. That is also something that teachers, in their opportunity to review the calendar, felt that they were very, very much in support of as well. Otherwise, it's very traditional, we've always started in the last full week in August. This year, the, obviously, Labor Day is very late, so it's very late, as early as it can be. And so at any rate, that is a little different, because usually, we're starting the 26th or the 27th of August, now we're starting on the 24th with professional development days with the teachers. Students will not be engaged with us until the 26th. We do extend in September, we have the fourth as a no-school day in order to provide a long weekend for families who are sort of saying goodbye to summer for probably that last really long weekend. Otherwise, there's really not a lot of differences in the calendar when compared to previous years, other than the two weeks at Christmas, which mirrors what we did this year, which seemed to be successful for oil usage and building utilization, as well as our faculty, gave our faculty some opportunities to do some traveling that they don't usually get to do.
Okay. Comments? School committee, yes?
I'm just wondering, is it really necessary to have this lady earlier these days, you know, speaking to a lot of teachers over the years, that actually, they really are not in favor of them at all? Do they think that it's a disruption, we're running buses? Would it be better to have full days and less of them?
It will be if you can get it in the teacher contract.
But then, we love it. I mean, we only have 18 full weeks, the kids joke when they have to go a full week of school.
Well, this year, I think, has been an extraordinary situation, I have to acknowledge. I don't think from December 19th till the end of February, we had a full week for anything. We were out of school almost every other Monday, delayed startages, just for a rough, rough period. So this year, it's sort of, very typical, but, you know, having opportunities for professional development is actually critically important to our staff. I would love to be able to, you know, schedule it rather than 183-based school year, you know, do 186, and we could have full days and not impact on students' release time, but again, that would be something we would have to negotiate and.
Yeah, I need to get some data on this too. It's definitely a lot of teachers that feel the way that you said, but there's also a lot of teachers that view that as a quality time to enrich themselves, and there's a lot of great discussions going on with teachers. It's so difficult for teachers to have time to talk with each other and to work with each other, and this time has really afforded us that, especially this year, the elementary school, there's some teacher leadership things going on, and I can say, the days that we have, like yesterday, for example, I was able to get so much accomplished with the person I teach with, and it's so difficult if we don't have that time built into the day, but there are definitely a lot of teachers that feel the way you do too, so I should get some data for that.
I mean, I'm not saying we don't need any, but.
Yeah.
I mean, there's 21 different opportunities of days when you total, it's only 18 full weeks out of 43 within the school year, so it just seems like a lot of disruption.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get some data on that.
What I'd like to do, to the administration, to us as the committee, this is, I believe, our third year going into this type of perspective. We made adjustments in the collective bargaining agreement to get some of this time available. We call it, I don't like to call it professional development, I like to call it professional learning, because that's what it really should be and ought to be, professional learning in any work that we do. But I'd like to go on record, if we could do a thorough survey and data collection, not only on opinion and attitude, but also, I'd like to know the effectiveness of the teacher quality piece and the student quality piece, because I hear you have some disruptions, the 18 weeks, that type of thing, but again, it helps us to make it better, inform our decision. So the last year, I mentioned it, and that was the second year, so now we've got two years under, we need to do something next year, early on, on this, because now it'll be a third year, parents are aware of this, and I need to know that. I think we as a community need to know that.
I think what we can do is perhaps, maybe monthly is too much, but quarterly, actually make a report to the committee of exactly what the professional development, professional learning was, what teachers were involved in, why they were involved in that, and what we hope was the result of that involvement. I mean, we've got new math programs, we have new ELA programs in all of our elementary schools, we have a very coordinated curriculum, we have a new teacher evaluation system that is implemented and very effective, as I said, it's made some early changes in the way in which we teach in the classroom. So we've done a lot of things, we've initiated a lot of new programs, and some of which were in response to statutory requirements by the state, but it does take time to do that, and it's very difficult to think you can do it on a volunteer basis and say, gee, if you're interested in a new math program, stay after with us and, you know, work on it. It just doesn't happen. So we've worked very hard to put together, you know, opportunities to ensure that there is high-quality teaching in those classrooms with the new program. There were times that, quite frankly, teachers got a new program and put it into the desk drawer, never went to another meeting on it, it never was taught. And that just can't be anymore. Our kids are held to higher academic standards, and our education is. Our kids are held to higher academic standards, and our obligation is to get from there. And I know, when the young man changed his tire, I don't know who it is, but there is no question, what our fourth graders are asked to do on state testing, third graders and their proficiencies in reading, it's by and away different than our children were asked a decade or two decades ago, there's no question about it. And I really would encourage you to meet with Sheila and just take a look at the fourth grade test. If you think that's your father's Oldsmobile, we're dreaming, maybe isn't, these are very demanding, you know, situations for our children, and our work to get our kids there and to be successful in our own profession, it's a very different, it's very different.
And I know Tex has his hand up, but also, you mentioned it, too, the appreciative and the dynamics that teachers want in the professional learning community for themselves as well. That is, it's not administration saying that we have control, that, that you are saying we need and need this time for our learning, and looking at authentic assessment and learning from each other, everything else. Tex?
I'd like to just stress the fact that I agree with my colleague, and exactly what she said, and this professional development, learning, as you said, really does not encompass all of the stuff on the set, and I know it's impossible, but the majority of times that you spend disrupting, what I call disruption to the students' learning, is on those release days, early release days, is not paying off to the degree you might wish it was paying. I don't think we have to re-educate the teacher to be able to communicate a learning project to the student. What is different this year to last year? And we had professional days last year, as we're gonna have them again.
Well, I would tell you, Tex, that I would love you to come in and really talk with some teachers who are working on new pieces of curriculum, new data team meetings that are absolutely essential. I've asked you to meet with some of our elementary principals and, you know, spend time with teachers, and you can come in someday when the consultants that work with us on various strategies are here and operational. You're absolutely right when you say every teacher is not involved to the same degree, that's true. One thing that I will say, that many other school districts have the ability financially to build in huge blocks of common planning time during the school day. We don't have a robust enough staffing pattern to do that, I wish we did, because that would, you're absolutely right, we wouldn't be trying to balance robbing Peter to pay Paul, because that's what we're doing, because we don't have enough money to provide what they call the common planning time, essential common planning time that's available to all teachers. That should be the way we deliver that program, that should be the way teachers have the opportunity as professionals to spend a piece of time every week, every day maybe even, working with colleagues, as you point out. We just don't have a robust enough staffing pattern to do that. I wish we did, it would be, I don't, you'd be, we'd be loving it, but we don't, and so what we've done is put together a process that we think delivers high-quality professional learning opportunities to teachers, and I really encourage each and every one of you, or if not, to have our elementary folks talk with the committee at any time, just sort of walk through some of the things that we're doing. We've changed the positions of paraprofessionals, we are now looking at hiring integration specialists, and changed really some of what's happening, especially in Barry and Highruth this year, that we have some significant learning challenges there with some of our students who come not as well-prepared as others, because they haven't had some of the same opportunities before school. So, I think we've made some huge changes, and we've had to make some, we have new strategies in the schools, and it takes time to get people on board with that and to have them understand what the new expectations are. We cannot teach the way we've always taught and get kids to the standards that are really required of them, and we just can't do it. And so, our teachers have, they absolutely need these opportunities, and we've tried to put them into this calendar in a way that's, that not only demonstrates our value of their time, but provides them with the opportunity to work together.
Yeah.
How does a calendar compare to districts that have the resources that we do, or that have the same programs?
Well, what happens is, I'm off track, there's enough teachers in there that, I might be the science specialist, okay? So, I'm teaching science, and I'm teaching the science and social studies or whatever I'm teaching, other than the ELA and the math people, because I've got the kids with me. So, there's not only, because right now, all we have is enough specials to give teachers one breath per day, whereas, if we have plenty of time, sometimes you have two or three blocks in a day, one day a week, where, so you don't have release time. So, your money is in staffing that allows us to provide, you know, high-quality instruction to the students at all times, when the ELA teacher might be off track in a learning environment. So, it's very, it's a very different, and there's not a lot of those in Central Mass, but go to Weston, go to North Rose Southborough, go to Trewsbury, they have specialists, and specialists in reading and so forth that are in the classrooms, they go in and do special lessons, we don't have any of that.
Just a couple of others to know on this piece, you have districts that would love to have this type of model, maybe not to the same extent to the eighteen, but in Worcester, we would love, a couple of years ago-
There's only ten.
Oh, ten, ten, I thought it was ten.
Ten really is.
In Worcester, we only have two staff development days built into the calendar, full-time. That's 25,000 students in Worcester, but I, we've had people make calls, my professional development folks, trying to ask, how can they make it work, this type of thing, small steps or whatever. In large districts, they can't, because it's big busing and things like that, becomes a big issue. But I would love to see, and maybe it's a collective bargaining position for us, too, down the road, is I would love to see 190 days in the calendar year, and eight could be dedicated purely, but you gotta pay for that through a process. So, what we're trying to do through the, with, working together, is what is the best way to be able to get that learning time? But you're absolutely right about disruptions, not only about, but the disruption of the day. So, we really need to be educated, and at the same time, we need that survey, both, on both ends of the spectrum.
And I think that, you know, the Wachusett district has a similar release times, day schedule, as does the Gargant, I mean, all of us are about the same as far as how much money we don't have to spend. And so, we have a model that is relatively effective as far as providing the time for the teachers. Does it disrupt the education? Absolutely.
I mean, we have only four months that have one full week in them, and there's several holidays, and then you have all the snow days, and then you have all the-
Don't say that, that's-
Well, maybe it's realistic, you gotta be realistic. And we're also spending a lot of time preparing them for our CAPS, so there is not a lot of classroom learning time anymore.
It's different.
It really is different, and I just didn't know if maybe fiscally, it would be better to consolidate some of these into full curriculum days and not run the buses at all?
Well, if we, the only way we can do that is to negotiate that, and that becomes probably some sort of a, a kind of, some sort of a, it's a cost to us to do that, and I'm not saying we couldn't attempt to do that.
No, but give them, you know, give the kids the day off and have the full-
See, I have to do 180 days with pupils.
With pupils.
No, there's no extra busing cost here at all.
Well, on the earlier, if you had just teachers coming in, you wouldn't have to bus them.
But those kids have to pick up the day.
Yeah, those kids have to pick up the day, so, that's a counted day.
I thought it's self-counted for the kids.
No, no.
No, you can't.
Count as a full day.
Yeah, so, anyway, no talking about it.
As you can see, as we do, get his strong feelings on this, and also, accountability piece, right?
No, you're wrong. It's just that we're trying to balance the needs that we have on both sides, and I wish we could do it a different way, because you're right, it would be better for the educational process if we could afford to pay for 187 days and have that full day.
And the other issue here is, there are definitely teachers that would agree with what you two are saying, as do I, but there's only so much time in the day, so the problem is, the same teachers that, I don't wanna say are complaining, but express concern like you do, they're gonna come and express the same concern to Dr. Marshall and myself when they say, "We have all these mandates we have to do, I don't feel like I've trained well enough to teach us, we need the time." So, it's one of these things, you know, we need to, you know, try and make it better, but I don't have the perfect solution for it, I-
Evan, how can somebody come up and say, "I'm not trained well enough to teach this program"? That is your, that is your specialty.
Tex, teaching IB is totally different. You go to the elementary schools and you see the new math, the new English, it is not the same system.
Correct.
I have teachers who, 28 years, have been phenomenal English teachers, they have a brand-new system. Can you imagine not having time to be trained with that? It's a, Tex, it's a-
I haven't discussed it before, but the thing about it is that, the observations that I made of IB programs did not impress me one single bit.
And this is not just a-
But that's what I'm talking about, I'm talking about, that was just one example that teachers are teaching in the high school. Go to the elementary schools, the new math programs cause incredible amounts of stress to teachers, because they take such pride in what they do, and they have this brand-new program. It is literally like taking a match to everything they have done, and lighting it on fire and saying, "You're starting over." It's a totally different way to educate. I'm not saying I necessarily agree with all these new programs, but these are the decisions that have been made, or they're state mandated, so we need time to do that.
Good, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna work together on this.
Yeah.
We're gonna get the data we need to make, to help us make better decisions, and I really need to emphasize that survey and understand the attitude and from parents and from students on this, absolutely. We are in charge of the calendar, this is our, this administration recommends, and as a committee, this is a very, we own this, this is our vote, we set that. We have parameters, but we're gonna make the proper adjustments, and this is the second time, second year, you've made a comment, and I, and to Mr. Williams last year, right before I remember talking about, so we need that, and we'll be thoroughly informed along the way, and we'll work this together. Okay, that was robust, and I knew that last item would be, that's why I-
Shoot him in the sunrise.
So, on this calendar, are we ready to move to go to a vote on this?
Sure, I motion we vote on it.
Okay, zero, seven. Zero, seven, okay. Any other further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Two, three, three opposed?
Oppose me, too.
And abstentions? And no abstentions, okay. Thank you. Next is adjournment. So, moved, and-